Let's call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Okay, we will get started straight. Oh, he's online. His hand is raised. Great. So let the record reflect that Councilor Bosmans is now online as a panelist.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We'll get started. We're going to start with organizational stewardship. Financial Services Monthly Report. Looks like we have Elliot coming up.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us. This is the Financial Services Monthly Report. So starting off, sales tax. Revenues for May were eight percent over our seasonal adjusted forecast. And they were almost exactly the same as where they were last year for the month of May. Year-to-date, we have grown 2.4%. So we are showing good growth predictable around that 3% level that we generally anticipate for inflation. But something that we're going to continue to monitor and as long as we stay above our seasonally adjusted forecasts, looking positive. Next, we have the General Fund Budget to Actuals Revenue. So we were seasonally, we were 13% below the seasonally adjusted revenue projections. Again, mostly that has to do with the intergovernmental transfers, which is correcting. We have received a few of them, but we, a few still are outstanding. So it's something that we're going to continue to monitor and make sure that we're getting those payments. But overall, nothing that we are too concerned about. Next, we have the Budget, General Fund Budget to Actuals Expenses, excuse me. And we continue to be just a little bit below our seasonally adjusted forecast on expenses. Again, expenses are going to be a little bit tougher to forecast using this model. Just because expenses are a little bit more variable and not as dependent on historic data. But overall, again, being below our forecast is a good thing. So we're looking good trending into May. Next, we have the Enterprise Fund Projected Revenues to Actuals, which are trending just above where we had predicted. And we do expect that they will start to climb in the coming months going into summer. A lot of that is airport and water and sewer with higher uses, seasonality. Little bit below where we were last year where it started to pick up a little bit earlier. But again, nothing that we are too concerned about. So we'll keep tracking and make sure that we are on pace. For the Enterprise Expenses, you may remember last month that we had talked about that there in this model, there is, there was a large jump. We're seeing that the trend is returning to normal, just as we expected. So that variance came down quite a bit and we are right online with where we expect to be for expenses for the enterprise funds. Again, same variance from last month returning to normal where we expect it to be for the capital budgets. Again, that, the variance last month was just due to one large transfer several years ago from water and sewer to their respective construction accounts. So that does throw the revenues into the capital budgets off just a little bit. But overall trending right, right in line of where we expect it to be. And then we've got the Capital Budget to Actuals on expenses. And again, trending right where we expect it to be. We do expect it to start to increase as we go into the summer months. And we have more capital projects that are able to be done. Big one is always asphalt. You need certain temperature requirements to get those done. Our streets crews are working hard to do those. And finally, our other financial services update. We have kicked off the 2025 budget internally. So we are working closely with all the departments to get all of their both capital and operating proposals for 2025. Been a real pleasure to work with all the different department leaders to get that done. Forward to presenting that later in the year. Audit was presented to City Council and zero findings. So thank you again for all of your support in that. Fleet and Facilities, we had 26 special maintenance requests completed, 151 warehouse counter transactions. And this annual snowplow prep project has begun. Snowplow generally starts now and completes in November. So it is a large process. But it is something that we have to start early to make sure that they are ready to go by the time snow falls. And we will have some early, ready earlier than that in case there is early snowfall. But we'll have the fleet ready by November. For Customer Service, the food tax rebate is still open until July 5th. So coming up today here pretty quickly. And some additional updates from our customer service is we had 45 new utility accounts set up since January of 2024. We have hired a new meter technician to be able to provide better service to all of our water customers. And we have enhanced our information sharing processes for delinquent utility accounts. So that they'll get better notifications and more timely notifications. And that is it for the Financial Services Update.
I just wanted to say one thing. Since we were virtual for the audit meeting, I just wanted to say big congratulations again to the finance team, all of you guys. Just a huge accomplishment to find, have zero findings, material findings on that report. So I think we've come so far and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that live. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's very much appreciated. If we could shout out Diane Gears, Heidi Wise, the accounting managers with the city, they've worked tirelessly to make that happen.
During that meeting, I asked kind of what were some of the steps that we have taken internally to get to this point of zero audit, material audit findings? And, you know, really great long answers of all the different steps that have been taken by the team. And I just feel so much, a lot of confidence in what is being presented. And it's wonderful for transparency. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? Excellent. Thank you, Elliot.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Environmental Sustainability Monthly Report with Marty Poole.
I apologize for those online. I forgot that Elliot had muted the microphone. Should I start over? No. Okay, thanks. All right. Yeah, just, it was Elliot's fault, not mine. So I would like to cover four, four programs. The e-bike rebate program, the library EV charging stations, the energy performance contract construction, and the Green Durango grants. So the e-bike rebate program has been another really successful showing. This is our second year of offering that program and much expanded budget for 2024. We received 130 eligible applicants in just over 80. We received 130 eligible applicants and just over 80 rebates were awarded, those vouchers. People have those in hand and are starting to purchase their bikes and get those rebate awards. Some interesting and, and really great demographics that we're seeing out of who this program is impacting. Three quarters of the applicants were below 60% area media income. So that really shows that this program is targeting people that are really in the greatest need for this rebate program. And a third of the applicants reported that they have no access or limited access to vehicles or concerns about their vehicle reliability or the cost of owning and maintaining their vehicle. So again, offering these bikes as a transportation option for these people in our community is, is really great that we're able to do that. And then another piece that's just important for council and our community to be aware of is that we do have by ordinance on natural service trails in the city. A limit on the 20 mile an hour governed. The speed limit that the bikes can go to. So that's class one and class two bikes. And so the, we are keeping the rebates to that limit of those kinds of bikes. So that helps alleviate some of the concerns of the bikes that can go faster than that. Because on our natural service trails, by code, only class one and class two bikes are allowed. I'll also note that the recommended speed limit on the animus road trail and other trails is even lower than that 20 mile an hour. So we're doing continued outreach with our multimodal department and PIO around etiquette and safe use of e-bikes on, in shared spaces. On the EV library charging project is complete. I'm just waiting on getting a couple of signs installed, but they are operational. We're already starting to see that use at the library. It has a van accessible space, which is the first of a city owned EV charging space that is van accessible. So it's the wider space with the aisle for wheelchair accessible. We received an $18,000 grant from the Colorado Energy Office and expect a few thousand dollars more in LPA rebates. And to celebrate the installation of these chargers, these four level two chargers at the library, we are offering free charging through the month of July. So kind of complements like our free transit service and some of this supporting of alternative transportation throughout the month of July. And also we'll draw folks to the library and let everyone know of this great complement of services that the, of everything else the library has to offer. The energy performance contract is nearing completion and we have already completed our lighting upgrades, energy efficient lighting, some of our HVAC controls and our water conservation. And now the solar project, which was a big, the largest portion of that work has been completed at all five sites. So over 600 kilowatts of solar installed. It's the largest collection of single, it's the largest single collection of solar projects in any one project in the city's all of Durango's history. So that's pretty exciting for the city to be a leader in that way. Again, because of how we leverage the timing and working with our contractor, we're right on track to take advantage of over a million dollars of Inflation Reduction Act federal rebates, which is great timing to help reduce the cost of that project. And we will be celebrating the entire energy performance contract with a ribbon, ribbon cutting at 10 AM on Wednesday, July 17th at the rec center. And last but not least, we have the green Durango grants program, which is $25,000 in local grants. So we awarded five, $5,000 awards to help incubate and spark community-wide sustainability efforts. So we have residential energy assessments administered by the Four Corners Office of Resource Efficiency, Four Corps. Four Corps also was selected as the, the top scorer for a water-related project, which is the rain barrel event and group buy sale. So people can take advantage of decreased costs for purchasing, installing rain barrels to use for outdoor water use and irrigation. Full scale, full-scale restaurant composting at Carver Brewing. So this is now all of their back of house and front of house. So like kitchen scraps and leftovers from customers are now, now being composted at Carvers and really hope to expand that and show proof of concept to a lot of other restaurants in our community and really get excitement about that alternative for managing food waste at restaurants. Bike Durango is working with our multimodal division on a protected bike lane pilot with some of these temporary delineators that you see in that picture. And then last but not least, Durang goats actually for the second year in a row was awarded as the top selection for, for natural lands and ecology category. And again, this is mitigation of noxious weeds and wildfire fuels by unleashing a pack of wonderful goats to eat all those. Guess goats aren't packs, pack herd of goats, but really cool. You know, uh, natural lands management approach coming out of that startup company in our community. So pretty cool to see. And that is it for me.
Excellent. Thank you, Marty. Any questions? Yeah.
And go ahead.
Thank you, Marty. Oh, thank you. The, um, the goat eating the noxious weeds. Cause I remember a long time ago, I was on the La Plata County Weed and Rodent Committee. And we tried to start that, but then we found out there was a lot of, you know, goat herding that had to be done in conjunction with the goats. You know, eating the noxious weeds. Is that also the case still?
Can you expand a little bit goat herding?
Yeah, like you have to make sure they don't get on the highway. They stay away from places where they're not supposed to eat. They also don't, and also some of those noxious weeds are noxious to the goats too.
Yeah. So, um, the manager of this company, it's really a smaller scale operation where it's kind of, it's a mobile herd. So he actually packs them up in a trailer and that's some of the, what our grant funding has helped support is the purchase of that trailer. And it's really designed for some of those spaces kind of around the community where, you know, this, we're not talking hundreds of acres here. We're talking maybe an acre here or there on some of that sort of semi-rural land. And so far I haven't heard any issues of the goats getting sick or any of, into any, you know, things that they can't be eating. And then no, haven't heard any concerns over, you know, where these goats are being allowed to roam. It's really, they're being set out in enclosed areas, you know, kind of like that, not, not so much like rangeland.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Some really great things going on. What was the budget for the e-bikes and how is that funded?
Yeah, absolutely. So the budget for this year's program was $150,000.
Okay.
50,000 was budgeted, was allocated from the city council discretionary fund of the lodgers tax.
Great.
Um, and so that was presented to council last fall among several proposals. And so it was accepted for that $50,000. And then we received a $100,000 grant from the Colorado Energy Office. And so, you know, looking at potentially continuing this into the future, we don't know if as much funding or grant funding would be available in, in future years. And it would be up to council for, you know, considering future budget out of the lodgers tax discretionary. But, um, yeah, that's the current budget for this year is 150,000.
Great. And then of the hundred, there was 130 applicants and 80 were awarded. What about the other 50? How come we just not have enough money?
Correct. Yeah. So it was budget limited and it was a sliding scale of awards based on area, area median income. And because we got so many at the 60% level, so the lower end, that means that we awarded higher rebates amounts. So that means, you know,
So less money, right?
Less money to go around. And the ones that weren't, it was done through a lottery process and the ones that weren't awarded were, are on a waitlist. And we've already opened up a few spots on that waitlist. So we track that, you know, consistently throughout the program year, but likely won't get through all 50 remaining on the waitlist.
Okay.
And so.
It's just such a great program. For the library charging stations, how are we letting people know, also like tourists know that there are charging stations there?
Good question. So we issued a press release just today about celebrating the free charging. So, and hopefully some news outlets picked that up. I think we already did get an article in the Herald about the stations. As far as tourism goes, um, it is up on our website, uh, on our EV page on our website. We also, many drivers use app, like the apps that show where charging is. And so those stations are on all of the apps. So
Okay.
The charge point proprietary app, it has like updated pricing and all, and all of that. There are some third-party apps like Plug Share where I've been checking those to make sure that those stations are represented. So basically if someone looks for it, they'll, they'll show up.
Okay. I'm so glad. And then on the bike Durango, those protected bike lanes, that's so awesome. Do we, what, how many areas in Durango are we doing that? Trying that pilot program? Just one?
Yeah. Yeah. It was $5,000 was essentially enough to purchase the equipment for one zone. And Bike Durango is working really closely with our multimodal department. I mean, you know, as well as anyone, how many infrastructure projects are, Devin, our multi-manager is, is overseeing. And so what this is, it just kind of adds a little bit of community-led capacity to explore some zones that were already identified on our list and they're, you know, working with us and kind of have some of that flexibility to try out a space, but it, for now, it is just, they're going to move forward with one. And we want to also make sure that they're following the necessary permitting and safety, you know,
Sure. Yeah.
considerations and guidelines that we, expectations that we have as a city. So.
Well, just as far as safety goes for the bikers, it just seems like such a great opportunity. Can you let us know how that program goes?
Yeah.
As we, as we kind of see how it works this summer.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions? Where is that going to be? What zone?
I, they've identified a few options, but I don't believe one has.
On second?
Second half between 13th and 14th.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Excellent. Next up, I'm assuming, see here. Safety and quality of life, public safety department monthly report, Chief Current.
Afternoon, mayor, council. My name is Bryce Current and the chief police here in Durango. Thanks for the opportunity to provide these updates in this study session. So we're currently working with our city partners right now, strategic goals and outcome-based budgeting. And we recently had our survey results with our department and the city manager came out and presented those to our team. So we had recently three, three graduates from the academy in May. And we have five more, maybe six going to the academy in August. And three happen to be female, which aligns with our 30 by 30 program. Many of our professional staff, police service technicians and our rangers are transitioning to become police officers, helping us fill those certified positions. And that's a kind of a foreseen benefit that we've seen with the program that's, that's happening. We have three open police, police department positions currently. We have a deputy chief interview and that we should have a new deputy chief in August. And we have laterals in the process that are filling the other two positions. And then we should be fully staffed at that point. In reference to community engagement and trust, we've seen some, some benefits from the language justice program and not only improving communication, but with the police department, we've experienced enhanced community trust with the Hispanic community. With trust, folks have increased access to justice. And they feel they can call for help without fear of the police acting as federal officials. And we had a lot of that communication at one of these last events. In the photo there, you see Olivia Di Pablo, uh, who continues to be a, a key partner in conducting in connecting our services to the underserved in our communities. So now we're moving on to part one crimes. And we consider the part one crimes to be our more serious crimes. And among them are murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault and burglary can be. And while larceny, car theft are more of our property-based crimes. And for the part one crimes in May of 2024, we're 24.1%. We have an increase from our four-year average of the previous months in May. For sexual assault, for the month of May, we didn't see any trends. Only one of these three were reported during the month of May, this month of May. And we take every sexual assault case very seriously and we look at them individually and we also look for trends. So four of the eight aggravated assaults were menacing and where there was no injury. Were, I'm kind of concerned with June. We've had a lot of the last probably two weeks, we've had a lot of all-out fights with our officers. And a lot of those assaults are on, are on the officers. And we're currently looking at that. Over half the thefts that we had were from vehicles and unlocked vehicles. We found that our, out of the theft stats, many of them resulted from three of the motor vehicles that were stolen. Out of, well, the three motor vehicles that were stolen and a lot of that's fraud. And from the credit cards and the other things that are found inside the vehicles, after the vehicles, and that bleeds over into other statistics as well. So the three motor vehicle thefts were from the same group. All three vehicles were recovered. And one of the suspects was arrested. And I'll talk about that in just a second. Another suspect was caught with a stolen vehicle this month. And from the same group. And so we arrested a homicide suspect in the mall from New Mexico in May. And he was running around with one of the individuals from that vehicle theft group. And that's how we were able to catch that individual. And so we have a lot of bicycle thefts here in Durango, as you know. And so we have a, what we call a bait bike with a GPS on it. And it was stolen in May by a guy with out-of-state warrants and we located him in a van in town and were able to arrest him. So the May traffic data. So in the past, there's, uh, May has been a high month in the past, reaching somewhat over 50 crashes in some months. And with our average throughout the year, probably 30 crashes. And we landed at 31 for the month of May. We were up 92% for traffic warnings, which we like to see a lot of warnings because we're getting out there and being seen and also connecting with the public and letting them know what we need, at what we need to reduce speed and accidents and pedestrian accidents. And so 82%, we were 82% up for the traffic citations. We're also working with Engage Durango right now with some upcoming traffic strategies and I'll report on those later. Criminal contacts were down and we're still considering that that may be part of the efficiencies of the municipal court system. It's kind of hard to tell with the stats that we have so far. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Can I make a comment? It's good news.
Yes.
I just, my tenant had a bike stolen and she called me and told me, but she didn't call the police. And I asked her to call the police, which she did. And the Durango Police Department tracked down her bike and recovered it out of Bayfield within like 18 hours. So I wanted to compliment one, the police department on do, on doing that. And two, anybody who's watching this, if your bike gets stolen, you have to report it or it's not going to get recovered. So I was really, really impressed with the great job that they did. My tenant was very, very happy to get her bike back. And it just was a great example of the, of the work that Bryce's department does every day. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Next up, library services department monthly report with Luke.
Hello, mayor and council. Thank you so much for having us this afternoon. Want to thank you as well for the warm reception you had for Daisy last month while I was out. As always, we look at the trends month by month and try to tie them to our four major service areas. The first of which is collection development and circulation. As you can see, the numbers are staying very nice. We had a 5% increase of total circulation. We had a 5% increase of total circulation. We love to see the growth of the use of that. Of course, that is our main service is the circulation of materials. And so for that to continue to grow year over year is a fantastic trend. Our outreach was really huge. You can see those are really big numbers, 140% increase, 57% increase. The only where we didn't see an increase was adult programs, but still that's a fantastic number, 178 over 11 programs. Our summer reading is going very strong. We are seeing great numbers this month, so we'll report on that later, but just fantastic numbers for that. And that's just, you know, continued use of just really thoughtful programs that reach all ages. We're really, really thrilled for one of the outreaches we had that was internal was when we had the leadership Park City come and we were able to host. And that was just a wonderful day of just sharing what all this city has to offer, and we were lo, just so fortunate just to be the locale for it. Our patron support, that's where, you know, we're helping people directly, and the big one for that is our reference questions. We saw an increase. You'll remember that we reported last couple of months that we saw some decreases, and it's something that we continue to look at. And we'll have a, with our quarterly report, a look at maybe a different way of doing that next year of looking at how we get our reference questions. It's currently a an estimate based on one, one day's a month use. And we saw continued growth in new cardholders, over 200 every month. That is just great to see. We just keep having it grow and grow and grow, people who are users of our services. That's a little baby getting a library card, which is just cute. And last but not least, library is used by space. If you remember, visitors is our key performance indicator we use on an organizational level. It was actually a slight decrease. But if you can see, the month of May, we had increases in everything else that we count, pretty much, programming, outreach, circulation. So seeing that, it shows that, you know, we're just in such high demand that even when we have a slight downturn or people coming through the door, we just see such use. One of those big numbers, of course, is we continue to see public room reservations go up and up. As Kyle has to see so many times when she's trying to make a meeting work at the library and how it gets harder and harder. We're reaching the good problem of racing towards capacity limits in our public room rentals, which is fantastic. And so that's true as well with total computer use. Again, as we said, last few months, that's mostly with the use of Wi-Fi. We've actually been able to see very heavy use of our public computers that are physical. But where the growth keeps happening is in Wi-Fi use, and we actually recently made a small improvement to our Wi-Fi. So we expect that to just continue and hold strong. Those are our major trends. So just a couple of heads up, what's going to be coming down the line for council and the public is in a couple of weeks at the regular session for the 16th, we will be presenting a resolution to get us in line with the new Colorado library law. And that's based on the reconsideration of library materials. Reconsideration is where a person from the public is asking for a title, display, or program to be removed or moved. Currently, our reconsideration policy only allows titles to be reconsidered. We don't do that for programs or material or for displays. And it will require a couple of changes to get in line with the new law. And so that's, will give you a history of challenges for the library, where this comes from, how it fits in with greater library trends. And so you'll be seeing that in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. I love the amount of exclamation marks you use in your presentation. I just
Very good.
excited even when I'm reading it. So it's great. Any questions for Luke?
Yes, I do. Go ahead.
I got a couple, Luke. So we keep seeing this consistent increase in library pass holders. Do you, so two questions, do you ever see that kind of plateauing off? Or do you kind of see this, you know, kind of even rise? And then are you keeping demographical data on it? Are they new people? Are they, are they new people to town? Are they people that have been here for a long time? Are they children?
So great questions. For the first one, we probably will see that plateau when we see some of our other numbers plateau. And so no time soon. We just aren't seeing it into the trends of steady growth. And a lot of what we do is designed around engaging the public in ways we haven't before. That's how our programs are designed, our outreach is designed, our collection management is designed. So we will continue to see, and a lot of that is recovery from COVID. We lost a lot of users when there was a big break, and then they didn't come back directly after COVID. And so then they're eventually removed from the system. So a lot of them are returning users. We do keep demographics on, you know, where they live, city, county, and a lot of the things. And we do have a just really phenomenal collection development supervisor. And she is looking at in the coming years, it really improving our database decision-making. That's something that we're looking at citywide, and the library certainly hopes to lead in that. And so we do hope to have better reporting on those trends coming in the future. It's not something that was captured in the past, but we're hoping to build those benchmarks from the two years I started and going forward.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Regarding trends, are you, do you ever get community input or feedback from residents regarding any desire to be open on Sundays? Are you hearing that especially now with summer and students out of school?
Absolutely. So there's, then when we do our surveys, we always find the number one request for expanded services are evening hours and Sunday hours. And the issue we have is we could not adequately staff it. So without adding new human being users, not just a reclassification of current, with the increase in services we've had, we just couldn't do it. And I have heard the question even internally from staff, hey, when we were open Sundays, we actually had less staff, but we have more services than we did. And also, we would have shortages on desks in our key busy hours, just so we could make our less busy hours on evenings and Sundays work. And since we've seen an increase in services, there's no way to staff it in a way that wouldn't lead to reduction in the quality of service. And that's just something I'm deeply opposed to. Because that's why we continue to see growth, is because we've had generational excellence from the people who came before me and the staff that they've built and the services we provide. And so Sunday and evening hours is my top goal, but it's just going to require a major budgetary change to where our budget comes from.
Understood. And those evening hours, what time do we close right now?
We close at 6 o'clock most nights, and then Friday we close at 5:30 and Saturday at 5:00. And yet that doesn't fit a lot of people's schedule, and we would really like to be open till 8:00 PM on those core nights of Monday through Wednesday, if possible. It's just the amount of staffing change that would cost us is exorbitant. When we looked at it the last time, it was several hundred thousand dollars a year in additional salary, and we just don't have it.
Well, I appreciate the input on maintaining the quality of service. That makes sense, but it sure would be nice to see that open more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Monthly Report. Hi.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Scott McLean, Assistant Parks Director with Parks and Recreation. Start off with an update on some of our improvement park projects. First one is the Shiner Park Improvement and Pickleball, which completed June 18th, opened the courts up to the public. They're getting a lot of use and a lot of people in the park. Also, we've kind of been impressed just with the, the noise was a concern when we were designing the courts. Walking distance from the courts, it does disappear pretty quick and doesn't seem to be a concern. So that's good news. We've got ribbon cutting scheduled for next Thursday. Looking forward to celebrating with you all on that achievement, so. Chapman Ski Hill, we're making progress. The Little Toe, all the footers have been poured for the poles on that. The equipment has arrived on site, so they'll start setting those poles, so it'll be a little bit more visible accomplishment there or just progress for public to see. The Big Toe or the Platter Lift, the one on skiers left of the hill, making progress, a little bit delayed with some utility relocations that need to happen for that, but still moving forward. Underground conduit for both the lights and lifts are all in place at this point as well. Smart 160 Trail, I think it was two months ago that we had an update on the trail in general, met with John Gilley, and since then, he was agreeable to using the lower alignment along Wilson Gulch. So we are, move forward with the design engineer on that, trying to keep him moving. I guess next step will be really refining the design to the point where we can say this is what we need for trail, for construction, and then have those conversations with John and coming up with an agreement with him, moving that forward. Durango Mesa Park, mid-May, the, the hub is substantially complete up there. Been up there, the stonework, the hub is the part where all the, the due trails, demonstration trails come together. That is substantially complete, the rock works, age structures. Came out nice and impressive, still be a place where I can see a lot of people gathering and hanging out, meeting up there, so. And then Durango Mesa Foundation is working on the emergency access. Getting lined up with a contractor to build that access road up to the property that will, future will provide emergency access. Initially, it will provide access to the resident that lives up there, so that when the construction starts on the road, they still have a way to get up there. And then the entry station, decontamination station at Lake Nighthorse, mostly excavation, earth moving at this point. So the, the decontamination station or pad has a pit underneath, sort of like a car wash wood that collects sediment. So that's a lot of what the work we're doing now is kind of that earthwork moving, carbon gutter, some of the realignment of the paving up there before they start the vertical construction. Quick updates on Parks Open Space Trails. Our Enormous River Trail counts are, were up about 35% in April and to date in May, about another 5%. So I think just with the start of spring, saw a big jump and then kind of leveling out there. Some maintenance projects that we've accomplished here the last month or so. The gazebo roof at Rotary Park, replaced that roof. It was old cedar shingles that were deteriorating, so pull those off, replace it. Some more Smith Sports Complex, continue to work on the turf up there. Feel like that's making good progress. The new seed has been starting to come in, but giving it some time for roots to get established. And then that, during that closure period, we've also did some maintenance on the parking lot, cut out potholes, repaved, crack filled on that, so that that's been completed. And then Lions Den, the floor on that's all stonework. A lot of that had settled over the years, and some of those stones were a lot of ups and downs in that. So we had a contractor come in, pull those out, recompact underneath, put that back in, so. Natural Lands Trails, May, we saw about a 14% increase, visits to natural lands. That's dropped off some in June. I think contributing some of that probably to the rain. And then it seems like every year we see a little bit of difference or decline, just as weather warms up higher, it gets hotter here. It feels like maybe people start to spread out a little bit more as opposed to just being in town. And then with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly for update on the recreation.
Mayor and Council, so Recreation Center visits were up over 2,639 people for the month of May, so that's great. So 30,000, over 30,000 people visited the Rec Center in just May alone this year. And a highlight to provide is there was 234 private swim lessons provided this May, which is amazing because our group lessons fill so quickly. So we're working really hard to get these privates in. Last year, we had 140 private lessons, so that's up 94 just lessons in one month. So super exciting there. Gymnastics is up, 136 daily visits and scan passes. And again, with gymnastics, it's mostly program-oriented, so it's not so much of a drop-in except for preschool and adult drop-in. And then Chapman Hill had 150 scan passes and drop-in. And I just wanted to note on Chapman Hill, because we do a lot of numbers for Chapman Hill, and it's really all of our rec facilities. If you go to rent a room at the Rec Center, or if you see all the free spaces, people just hang out. Chapman Hill was like that. So we provided that in the handout, but just an example, 3,000 people visited for the Devo Bike Swap, and they generated over 250,000 in sales, 50,000 in revenues for Devo. The Iron Horse Classic is there. We have the Stronger Together City Picnic. The, all the high school hockey games, the adult tournaments. So none of those numbers get counted when we sometimes come and present to you. But just wanted to demonstrate how much use these facilities are getting, just drop-in. And like Jessica, you know, with the recitals, those, those bleachers are packed. There's only standing room only to watch the kids do their show. So super exciting, and with the high school hockey team, you guys know that. And then summer programs, these are, tend to be our normal summer programs. Did want to stand out that we're offering a new partnership with Four Corners River Sports to offer kayaking and BMX camps in partnership, because a lot of times kids can't do a half-day BMX camp because the parents work. So we partnered, and they've been so popular, weightless. So they go BMX-ing in the morning, have lunch at Four Corners, and then they do kayaking. So it's been a great addition. And then we're also offering free youth soccer and flag football at Santa Rita besides our normal program. So that's been a fun addition. Community events, the courts what's coming up, July 4th, so I brought some flyers if you don't already have it. Super exciting, and the motets are coming, so it's going to be exciting. We're going to fireworks with all this rain. So I'll, I'll give you those if you haven't seen them already. They're around everywhere. Banner permits, 24, same as last year. We had three film permits, which, none in 2023, so I don't know entailing, but. And then event support 33, which is the same as last year. So I think our month of May is kind of consistent with our events each month, so. And we do want to highlight that we're doing our Durango Perks and Rec Open House on July 17th from 2 to 5. And it's to celebrate, July is National Parks and Rec Month nationally, so we haven't ever celebrated that in the past. So we're going to do that, and the theme is Where You Belong. And what we're doing, we have a foam party at the Rec Center out on the splash pad. The entry for the Rec Center is going to be what it was when we opened, so it's 250 for youth, 350 for adults, so that'll be a fun day of that. And then all of our programs like softball, volleyball, gymnastics, they'll all be giving out stickers and just trying to celebrate, celebrate that in general. And then we have a lot of community groups, over 15 are going to come and be at an open house from 2 to 5 to just kind of share their programs and.
What day was that?
That is July 17th from 2 to 5. And again, trying to celebrate even at gymnastics classes and all that with stickers and games. I think that's all I have. Any questions for us?
Questions? Great numbers. Everything's amazing. Yeah, good. Okay. Thank you.
I do, I have a couple of questions.
Sorry.
No, no, no problem. I thought, I thought Dave was going to go. That's really good news to hear about the pickleball courts and the noise. I'm very happy to hear that. I'm hearing really good feedback from our residents that are just thrilled and just enjoying them so much. How, I was curious, how late are the pickleball courts open at night?
Dark because of the light situation.
Okay, so they can play until dark. And are people using the rentals of that program after the drop-in play?
They're not quite as, I was going to run a report today more for, because there's some requests to do some clinics and stuff. But it's, they're not as busy as they are during that morning time rental, so it's interesting. And we are working on improving the rental systems to make it easier, so people don't have to make an account and all that. So that was in, in process. So hopefully we get it a little simpler for people to reserve in.
The feedback I'm hearing is that they're really enjoying the way you guys have laid out the drop-in hours. And they love being able to access it on the River Trail and biking there and into town. So I think I'm so, I'm so pleased to hear that, and I'm very happy to hear the, about the noise. And I was going to ask a question on Chapman Hill. When will, when, when do we anticipate that that project will be complete?
It'll be complete for the season. Yeah, so they actually, the timeline actually has, is ending by like October to be done, and then we'll do the final dirt work, and then we have to do the reseeding and all that. So officially, it'll be ready to open for.
And when we open it for the, with the new toes or the pommel lifts, are we going to, you know, will the prices be the same for the residents of the community?
It raised a little bit. I think it raised, I'm trying to think, I've seen the brochure, it was like up like $5 for annual pass, so not.
Not tremendous. Good.
Just what our normal thing is.
Because it's so well-used, it's such a great amenity, that we don't want to price anybody out. That's good news.
Yeah, so it's up a little and, but not, yeah, nothing.
Great. So, makes sense.
All my Three Springs folks are going to be super stoked about the Smart 160, at least, you know, we're, we're for turtle, you know, speed getting there, but at least we're making some moves. So I'm, I'm really excited that he is amenable to the, that lower proposal, and hopefully we can get some design work and get them.
And I think just being clear that it's a first step, it's good, I mean, maybe not first step, but it's another step in the right direction. But just based on the scale of the project, it's going to be a multi-phase project over a number of years, but it could just move in.
It's, it's another step in the right direction, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for the report on the pickleball. But I had
Okay, thank you for the report on the pickleball, but I had, um, I observed on the pickleball court on the south entrance. Where the parking stripes are on the pavement. And when I go down the road there and I see people parking in that spot, is there any way to open up that spot for parking? Or do we need that for, um, for something?
You're just there in the same parking lot.
South side, yeah.
South side. We've talked about that, I think we're going to give it a little bit of time and just see how it works or doesn't work. And it feels like most of the time there's been adequate parking at, at the courts and, but are kind of looking at that south end and how to better use that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, we did here for the pickleball that we were hoping you guys could do a serve and play a little bit, did you get that?
Oh, we're all going to play, I'm at a tail for the grand opening, I'm so sad.
I would be there.
I do want to at some point.
We should get some of our staff out there too, guys, come on.
I've never played either.
I know we've got staff members that play.
I'm not playing with Erin, I feel like she's too competitive.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Or maybe you want to play with Erin.
Yeah, she can be on my team.
Right.
That's what you do.
All right, sorry, uh next up, we have reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. Uh first up, Transportation Department Monthly Report with Sarah Hill.
Yes, good afternoon, council, Sarah Hill, Transportation Director. And I am here to provide our June update for you, we have been busy since our last update. This slide, you guys can see that on your screens, right? Okay, so this, um, this slide shows just a few of our opportunities for public engagement that we've had since we saw you last. On the left-hand side, that's the Anam's View Drive Public Meeting, um Neighborhood Meeting. It was a packed house, and then we have the North Main ADA Improvement Public Meeting there at the top. And then I also wanted to take the opportunity to remind everyone that it is uh zero fare transit for the summer, thanks to your dedication of the discretionary lodgers tax funding. So in May, we did provide thirty-three thousand and seventy rides in transit. That brings our total annual ridership up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty-seven rides for the first five months of the year. That's an eight and a half percent increase over twenty twenty-three, which was at that time a twenty-five percent increase over twenty twenty-two, so we're, we are cruising. Um, on the right-hand side, I've broken out uh ridership for each one of our routes, so you can kind of see what a typical ridership is for each of our single routes. And the Main Avenue Trolley is always our highest used single route. Uh it operates more frequently, it operates every twenty minutes instead of every thirty minutes, we have larger capacity buses. Uh it hits a lot of residences, a lot of downtown landmarks, tourist attractions, um so that's always a really popular route every month. And then I just peeked at the ridership for June, I don't have a slide for that, but the first month of free fare, we gave over forty thousand rides. Um so it does show that we, eliminating that barrier of a fare, uh does have a positive impact on ridership. Then in multimodal news, we've been pretty busy with our community engagement phase of several different CIP projects. The Downtown Next Step questionnaire closed on June seventh, we had over seven hundred responses on that one. We are going to be developing a focus group of business owners and residents to review the survey responses. And uh discuss the design recommendation to provide additional level of input to staff, so that will be coming to you at a future meeting. Um for the focus group, we're going to be seeking five uh downtown business owners to, to represent uh business perspective. One La Plata County resident, and then four representative citizen-at-large um for that focus group. We have the date set, uh there's going to be two meetings, um just to make sure that we have enough time to sit down with them and really work through some of the questions and have a good discussion. Those dates are going to be July twenty-sixth and August first for anybody that's listening and interested. And um we will be advertising the opportunity and seeking applications uh shortly, and Clancy may have some more information about that one. And then additionally, uh staff has been invited by the bid Chamber of Commerce and Local Firsts to participate in a moderated question and answer panel. To answer some business owner-specific questions about the Downtown Next Step Project. So uh we worked with them yesterday, we're hammering out some of the details. Uh but all of that information will be published and uh looking forward to have an opportunity to have that conversation with business owners. Um and then also the pilot project is going to be implemented throughout the rest of the summer. And we are continuing to seek input and provide education about the project uh throughout the summer, so this one is keeping us busy, it's an exciting one. Um and then council's already seen these photos, but just for the benefit of anybody else interested in the project. We have um existing conditions shown on the bottom corner of Main Avenue and Seventh Street. And then uh the top corner photo is the proposed rendering of uh what the design concept will look like. Moving on to the North Main ADA Project, this project has reached thirty percent design. And we hosted a public meeting in June to receive input and feedback about um this one. Scope of this project is pretty straightforward, it is uh access improvement, sidewalk improvements along CDOT's right-of-way on North Main. So we haven't received a lot of um comments or concerns about this project. And moving forward into right-of-way and acquisition to keep the design moving. Midtown Safety and Connectivity Project, that has reached sixty percent design. Um and that includes for the two alternatives that we're looking at for the intersection at Florida Fifteenth and Third. That would be the mini roundabout proposal or the Fourteenth Street Alignment. So we have our sixty percent design public meeting for input um next Wednesday, July tenth at five thirty at the rec center. Uh we're going to be seeking input generally for the um, the larger portion of the project, which is the second Ave corridor. We're at sixty percent design there, so we can take some minor adjustments, but we really have reached um, you know, kind of a further uh sixty percent design level of that project. Um but then we are also going to have a deeper conversation about which treatment at that intersection that uh receives the most support. With disadvantages and benefits of both, we'll have cost estimates available for people. Um and then we were, are going to be bringing all of that feedback to council to make uh, to give us some direction on how to move forward with the intersection treatment. Clean Commute Day was June twenty-sixth, we had eight stations around town this year, it was a really strong year of partnership with a lot of um local businesses. Made it a really truly community event be, versus what it's been in the past, which was just hosted directly by the city, so. It was a really fun opportunity and we had really good participation in that. Um I wanted to let you know that one of the maps created for the multimodal transportation plan was recently awarded first place in this National GIS Certification Institute map contest. And it shows uh bicycle pedestrian crashes in Durango. We use it to help us identify high priority corridors for projects. And um through the development of the multimodal plan, Devin King developed this in partnership with Anna Riling of Four Corners Mapping and Steve Pavlik of PST Engineering. So just wanted to highlight that little win. Um and then at council's request, I did want to briefly cover the Vision Zero Resolution, which was brought to you, I believe, last month um by Shirley Gonzalez during public, public comment. So Vision Zero is a strategy to eliminate uh fatalities or serious injuries on our roadways. And that, and that's with a focus on safety and mobility. It directly does support the strategic plan goal of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. And it's also one of the objectives in the multimodal transportation plan that council adopted last year. So staff fully does support this effort, we're really excited to see the um citizen support of this. Currently, we don't have a formal goal to reduce uh crashes, accidents, and the impact to residents. So uh we believe that adopting a Vision Zero goal will show the city's commitment to improving safety on the roadways. And it will help us also be competitive in grant funding through CDOT, FHWA, and FTA for some of those safety projects that we've identified. So staff is going to be reaching out to Shirley um to assist in the effort where, where they need. Because what we are seeing across the country is where it is a community-led initiative, they're having a little bit more success. So we will offer them resources and support however they need and work towards bringing a resolution to you for consideration for Vision Zero. And then lastly, um for our parking update, we held our neighborhood meeting last Wednesday to discuss whether there is a need and interest in a managed parking program in the east neighborhoods. Um or the neighborhoods east of the downtown central business district. This project was brought to staff through citizen request, and then also it was identified in the parking management plan. For consideration, especially at Third Avenue, where they meet some of the baseline requirements for considering a managed program. Um because there will be overflowing effect uh from a permitted parking system, we did expand the invitation to include Third Ave to Eighth Ave, Fifteenth Street, Fifteenth Street to First Street. So Walker Consultants presented on both the benefits and disadvantages of a managed parking program. They provided residents with considerations and best practices from um other systems that they've worked with. And talked about what a managed program can and can't solve. There were sixty-two attendees, we had a great amount of feedback and input. And um posted a few quick polls in real time at the meeting, just to get a sense of where people were in the room. And these are not scientific, but I'll let you know the results of some of those polls that we, um, that we took. So the first question asked if people experienced a parking problem at their residence east of downtown. And sixty percent, sixty-two percent of twenty-nine respondents said, yes, they did experience a parking problem. However, only, however, sixty-three percent of thirty-eight respondents said that they were able to find parking within two blocks of their residence every day. So there is, you know, kind of a tight constraint to the definition, I think, of what a parking problem is on the boulevard. And then the final question asked respondents if they were in support of a neighborhood parking permit plan for the residential area east of downtown. We had forty-seven percent of thirty respondents say no, they were not in support. Thirty percent said maybe, and twenty-three percent said yes, so they were not very conclusive results left. There were a lot of questions left over about, you know, what would it cost, what would the rules be, who would it impact, what's the boundary of the neighborhood? So we're going to be doing some ongoing outreach in the next couple of weeks. Um and bring some feedback to council for your consideration um and a staff recommendation. But we do want to spend a little time getting some more feedback from residents. Currently, we have received forty-two comments or emails. Ten being in favor of a parking permit, twenty-four opposed, and eight stated unclear, so we have a little bit of work to do to dig into some of those responses.
Excellent, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, that's a good report. Um I just had one question on the rendering of the Next Steps program. On the top picture, it looks like there's going to be a chip and seal included with this uh Next Steps, or is that um not precise?
So part of, yes, so that's kind of the partner-funded project with the Public Works Department, is that there is a road reconstruction and utilities enhancements that are going to be completed along with the project.
Okay, long-term.
Not chip and seal, but a full reconstruction.
Okay, all right, thanks, that's all I wanted to know.
I first heard chicken suit and I was like, oh, I am not seeing.
I know, I literally was like. Any other questions?
I do, unless anybody else does. So we're getting lots of feedback, of course, on the Downtown Next Steps, um I had office hours and spoke again about that. And I'm glad to hear that we're doing so many community meetings on that. Um, can you send us the dates of those meetings, I'm, I would like to attend those if possible. Um just so I can hear firsthand kind of what some of the residents are saying. Um and um, yeah, I, yeah, I just think that um, I, I'm also wondering. In addition to the opportunity to kind of just hear their feedback, um some of the things that um I know a few counselors have offered. Um I have and I know others have as well, I took their lead, um is to kind of walk the streets with them during, with some of the business owners during this trial period. And I wonder if it might be helpful to set up like a, a planned, a planned tour, you know, and to invite business odor, owners. Because um when I spoke with some of the business owners, we didn't, we don't want to exclude anybody, but obviously, I think there's seventy business owners downtown, so we don't want to do seventy tours. But could we, you know, I was wondering if we might be able to coordinate that, actually walking the streets.
Absolutely.
And if so, I would love to be there for that as well.
Yeah, we would be happy to do that, and I know Devin has given that opportunity to a lot of business owners to hear directly from staff. But I think that um them being able to have direct access to city council or in that.
Absolutely, I think it's important, especially during this trial period, so please do keep us informed of those dates, um I know I will try to attend. Um, and I just wanted to, you know, it's interesting uh to hear the input on this managed parking program. Because of course, we started looking into that for the residents.
Right.
And so it was really to help them, um so if, you know, if, if it's not a prod, a program that's going to help them, of course, we would want to be apprised of that as well. Um because there's a lot to manage a program like that as well, so um I just find it kind of interesting, because here we're trying to address some of the issues that residents have brought forward, but then you were getting this type of feedback, so it's kind of interesting.
Yes, it is, it's very, there's definitely different um, different ideas and perspectives out there about who has access to the road.
Right, so important considerations.
Okay, thank you very much, Sarah, next up, we have, I'm assuming Public Works, I can't find my, there she goes. Public Works Department Monthly Report with Allison.
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody, I'm Allison Baker, Public Works Director. And I wanted to start off a little bit differently today. Uh, Public Works has a new employee. And um I wanted to introduce her and let you know what we're doing. Uh we're working on education and outreach, I think everybody is aware that aging infrastructure um at council level understands what we're looking for and why we're doing that. However, uh community-wide, it is not as well-understood what's going on, why it costs so much money. Why we're always asking for something in one area or another. So um, I, you had approved a position for uh outreach and education and coordinator. And I've hired Laura Rick for that position. Um Laura has ten years of great experience coming from working her way up through the water uh department. And she's worked with the water plant and distribution. Uh most recently, right before she was stolen by Public Works. Um she was the plant supervisor, so very intense, high-level experience in water. And uh real willingness to learn about the other pieces of Public Works, so that we can expand that, that program. In between all this work, Laura is also working on her master's degree in uh water engineering and management. So um no extra time to kill, for sure. I wanted to mention that we have um education for the public on what we do, why, getting the word out. And we also have uh extensive internal training that goes on, this for certifications and licenses. And Laura is not only helping our people get organized for that, she's helping regionally to provide more opportunities in Durango. For um smaller entities to come and receive training with us as a, a mutual benefit kind of program. In addition to the processes and projects, um she's uh working on uh, a, a lot of random things that have come up, she's helped me tremendously with some budget items this year. As we've been um working with utilities to fill a few positions. And um just in general, jumped in and been a great, great asset. We did decide that the best way for you automate her was for her to do our May presentation of the update. So um kind of uh throwing her in the briar patch here. And I think she'll give a great presentation. I know there are probably a few questions about the tier, tier-two uh items that we sent the notification out on. And I will talk after Laura's done the update to give you a little more, I'll hand out some of information and give you a little more um detail, and if you have questions or are getting questions from the customers, we can talk through this. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Allison. Um, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, I'm Laura Rick and a public outreach education coordinator for Public Works.
I'm Laura Rick and a public outreach education coordinator for Public Works Department. And we'll be discussing the update for May for Public Works. And Public Works aligns with the strategic plan goal of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. Since Public Works covers five divisions, and some of those divisions have their own divisions, we could be here all night talking about the updates from Public Works. So I just wanted to stress that there's so many details, there's so much hard work and severe dedication that goes into everything that we do in Public Works to make sure that our critical city services are delivered to our customers, and they're delivered with our high standards. So I guess I should, you know, forward this first time. We have show and tell to start with. So in May, all of the divisions of utilities and the stormwater team taught classes at the Twenty-Sixth Annual Children's Water Festival at Fort Lewis College. Careful, that bronze one is sharp, so don't cut yourself. That's why they're on a platter. But I'll get to those. So the, the Water Festival brings fifth graders from around the region to Fort Lewis to learn everything about water for, for a day. And we had the largest representation from the city at Water Fest this year than we have ever, with five different classes teaching water treatment, wastewater treatment, collection systems, distribution systems, and our stormwater management system. At the treatment plant, the water treatment plant, the water demand increased eleven percent over last year in May. The raw water irrigation increased thirty-nine percent, and we started pumping from the Animas a month early this year. And this is due to having a mild winter this year, and our irrigation systems around town coming online about a month earlier than last year. We started the water plant expansion feasibility study in May, and funding was approved to move forward with the Florida Outfall, which, project, which is going to install a prefabricated valve control vault at the headworks of the water treatment plant. And we had an unexpected training opportunity in May, which is what I just passed around. The bronze piece that is in there was the fail, a failed piece inside of a valve out by the hospital, causing this pressure-reducing valve to completely fail. So the new one next to it is what we installed. And you can see just the power of water and what happens inside that valve is pretty amazing. At the wastewater treatment plant, we treated about six percent less wastewater than May of last year. Again, likely due to a mild winter, we had less inflow and infiltration, less runoff coming into our collection system. And our cogeneration system, which takes waste methane gas and uses it to help power the wastewater plant, produced just over thirty-two thousand kilowatt-hours of electricity, and that equates to about two thousand dollars in electricity savings at the plant. The wastewater plant's been participating in sampling our wastewater for COVID- nineteen since 2021. And we've since added sampling for RSV, enterovirus, and monkeypox. And this provides data trends to the state to help track viral outbreaks in our community. So this trend shows the presence of COVID- nineteen in our wastewater influent from 2022 to present. And you can see there's some times of spikes, but that generally, we're on a downward trend. And this program utilizes COVID relief funding. With this funding running out, the state has limited the number of facilities that they're going to monitor, but they've chosen Durango to continue monitoring, because we're providing useful data for the entire southwest region of Colorado. The distribution crews assisted with the North College Drive Reconstruction Project in May, locating service lines, coordinating water shut-offs, and responding to several emergencies. They also had three, what we're going to call WB's, because we don't say the word, remember. They repaired the overflow pipe at Timberline Tank, and they had to work overnight and shifts to make sure that these services were restored to our, our customers. They purchased a new pipe saw in May, which is really, really exciting if you're a distribution crew member, because this particular saw can cut through any type of pipe material, and it cuts down their time and effort in all of these water and sewer repairs. And in an effort to bring more operator trainings to our area, as Allison said, Public Works hosted a two-day water distribution training, and we opened it up to other water systems around. Again, there's a very severe lack of training in our area for water and wastewater operators, so we typically have to travel to Denver, Salt Lake, Phoenix, which adds up a lot of money for trial, training and travel costs. So bringing these here, these trainings here, and offering them to other systems not only reduces costs for us, but for those smaller systems where the operator of the wastewater plant and the water plant is also the janitor and the mayor, really helps them out. So the sewer collections crew continued repairs and maintenance on problem sections of sewer mains that were identified from the recent sewer line rapid assessment tool survey. And this tool sends acoustic signals between manholes, and it can identify blockages in the sewer lines. And that just makes sure that we're focusing our efforts and time on the right pipes at the right time and not wasting any time and effort. The aging Upper Ramada Lift Station was replaced in May, and a six-inch main was, sewer main was repaired after the bottom of this old clay pipe failed. The water meter crews replaced fifty-one meters in May. Some were part of the meter replacement program and others because they were leaking. And they continued efforts with the service line inventory as part of lead and copper regulations, utilizing CD-PHE grant funding. Regulations require that all lead service lines be replaced if they're found, and so far, none have been found to date. With spring cleanup completed in April, the Streets Division shifted focus to painting. They swept just over eleven hundred miles of roads and painted eighty-nine miles of roads just in a two-week period in May. A hundred and forty-two signs were repaired or replaced in May, which is a twenty-eight percent increase over last year. And that's due to the signs being damaged or faded, and then the addition of more signs in troublesome areas. A hundred and sixteen potholes were repaired, which is a bit more than May of last year. And Streets and Trash and Recycling Divisions attended the Touch a Truck event at the library, so kids could play on full-size versions of their favorite toys and honk the horns. May in Trash and Recycling was pretty business as usual, with seventy-six trash truck loads worth of compacted trash taken to the landfill. It's similar to April. Two-hundred-and-forty tons of single-stream recycling material was diverted from the landfill, which was forty percent less than May of last year. And this difference is still to recouping our stock after the closure in February. We had four new commercial trash and recycling accounts and took in almost thirteen thousand dollars from about sixteen hundred drop-offs. This is fifteen percent more than last year. We took delivery of a new front-load trash truck in May, which is replacing a truck that's reached the end of its useful service life. In capital improvement construction management, they were extremely busy in May. Construction season is in full swing, and no projects went out to bid in May, but several have in June or did in June. The Florida Outfall Project at the water plant went under contract in May, as did the primary clarifier relining project at the wastewater plant. Work continued on the pickleball courts, which are now open, and work continued on Chapman Hill, County Road 250, 251, the Thirty-Second Street Stormwater Detention Basin, and North College Reconstruction Project. So CICM inspectors and project managers, managers were extremely busy all month long. Improvements to Lake Night Horse entrance started in May, which will, as you heard, include the new decontamination station and permanent entrance structures, and the nine-one-one communication HVAC project wrapped up in May. And of course, last but not least, engineering was extremely busy. They started out with lots of public outreach and education events, attending the Water Festival with utilities and opening weekend at the farmer's market. And Public Works is going to be having a booth at the farmer's market throughout the summer and early, early fall, highlighting each division from Public Works. So keep an eye out. We'll be there July thirteenth and twenty-seventh and into the, into the future. A permit was issued for the film series Horizon, part of which was filmed in downtown Durango. The Durango Mesa Project is moving along with design guidelines finalized and the plat drawings nearing acceptance. Downtown Durango Hotel was placing modular units in May, and fiber trenches were patched. And lastly, Affinity Apartments in Three Springs started construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, do we have questions? Any questions?
Just a comment.
Yeah.
Do you guys have questions? I just have never seen so many construction and improvement projects going on in the city of Durango, ever. You cannot drive anywhere without seeing something going on between our Public Works, our streets, and, and Parks and Rec. It's just, it's really, really impressive. And I think it's just such an amazing feat, the coordination of resources, staffing, funding, project management, that it's going on just within the city of Durango. So I just wanted to note that, because, I mean, all these reports are talking about it. And like I said, just driving around town now, you really can't, I mean, you're stopping. We're, we're all stopping all over the place because of all the work. But it's really helpful also to see the example of the aging infrastructure, in your case, with Public Works, because, you know, it's underground, we don't see it, so it's not top of mind.
Exactly.
Until it breaks.
Exactly. And that's exactly why a position like this exists in many municipalities and many utilities, and why we, we need it.
It's so critically important, so I just wanted to thank you, all, everybody, all of staff for their effort on these projects.
Yeah, and, and a reminder too, you know, a lot of, a lot of the services that we provide are underground, and, and no one calls unless it doesn't come out of the sink or doesn't go down the toilet. So, yes, keeping that front of mind is very important.
Thank you so much. And speaking of handouts, Kelly, I wanted to see the Fourth of July, definitely.
Thank you. Last minute, put together a presentation. So Allison Baker again, and thank you for letting us share a little information about a violation that you were notified of as it went out in the utility billings from customer service this month. This was a requirement that, from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CD-PHE, which you'll hear me reference repeatedly. We've put together a little more information. This will continue to go out over the course of probably about a year with our bills, and we'll have updates as we do this, as we bring the system back into compliance. But just to start with, what happened was that in the process of a new manager working in our collections and distribution section, Water Division of Public Works, he started reviewing the documentation and the data, data processing that we do within the system to track backflow testing and cross-control connection monitoring within the city. The backflow collection and cross-connection control are a little bit technical. If you look at the first page. Going down a bit. The, it's controlled by a backflow preventer. And you'll see two pictures. I have no doubt most people have seen these in various yards and areas around the, the city. They're very, very common. And the actual purpose of the backflow preventer is so that if any contamination is in the system of, say, a sprinkler system or a glycol, subfloor heating system, something like that, that you would not want to get into the city water system. This prevents the water from flowing backwards into the city system or anything that might have encountered a contamination within the system. So as the review was going on of the data, it became evident that the city had not been receiving documentation from backflow testers. Backflow preventers require annual tests to be taken, and that includes irrigation systems that have those. So in determining that we did not have adequate documentation coming in from the testing companies that do the backflow, we realized that our notification system needed updating and that as a responsible utility, we needed to notify CD-PHE of the missing data in our system. So we have worked with CD-PHE to begin updating the system with tracking down any information from the companies that currently do the testing that are required to report to us and the customers that own the systems. Both can have copies of the test results. And anything we've been able to document and track down, we're adding to the system. It's, if you go through, go through the details here, the real high point of this is that these are administrative errors, violations of record keepings, and they're not a public health or drinking water emergency, danger, any anticipated problems. It's a matter of the records were not in the systems as expected. So we're working with them as customers. Our ratepayers should know this is happening. So we do provide this with the, the city water, well, city utilities bill. And we'll set every quarter until it is corrected. Let's see, what other information can I give you? The, the testable systems can be found in residential and commercial systems, commercial food preparation, commercial industrial type of business processes. They'll be located typically outside where the water comes into the building or crawl space or riser room, somewhere fairly easy to access if customers and businesses want to find theirs. That's the way, that's the place to start looking. The questions that we've been receiving via phone that I imagine council is hearing as well is, what, what should I do in response to this notification? Because it is not commonly discussed information with the average consumer about a backflow preventer. So where, if you have a backflow preventer, if you go out, look for it, and see that you do not, that you have a backflow preventer, you need to ensure a city-approved certified backflow tester is testing your assembly annually and sending the test report to the Utilities Division, our Cross Connection Control Program Office, CC. our Cross Connection Control Program Office, CCCP, within 24 hours of testing. These are state regulations, these are not things the city came up with, but they are state, state-required tests to be done annually. So there, there's additional information included in here about the certified testers. If you do not have a backflow preventer and do not meet one of those examples on the first page of typical backflow preventer uses, then likely you have no reporting requirements, and you may consider this notification as information only. So for those folks, it's just informative, there's no action required. If you do not have a backflow preventer and do have one of the examples that, such as an irrigation system, please call the CCCP with the city to schedule an appointment. We can have one of our personnel come out and verify whether you have a backflow preventer that maybe you didn't see, or if you need to have one installed. Legally, any system that could contaminate does have a requirement by the state for a backflow preventer. So please contact us if you're unclear in any way. If there's not one and you need one, you do have to have a licensed plumber, install the appropriate assembly and have it tested annually by an approved certified backflow tester. So more detail on the notification follows. Again, the primary thing, this is not a public health or drinking water emergency. You don't need to boil your water. There's no anticipated risk from not having the data. More information follows that I'm happy to work through with anybody who has questions. City has received no evidence, nor received notification of any back pressure or back siphonage events that occurred in 2023 or to date. More information is available through our website. If you go to slash four one one slash backflow prevention, you can use the QR code, or we've got the address, address of the website listed. So what is being done now to make sure this is, does not happen again in the future, that we clean it up now and have good processes? We're working diligently with contacting any testers that are eligible and might have records that were not submitted. We're contacting anybody who we have records of having previous tests submitted. More importantly, going forward, there will be a notification process that notifies anybody who has not submitted an annual report that we're aware should have. One, will receive a notification mail or email at 30, 60, and 75-day intervals to make sure that they're aware that they have not submitted and that we're expecting that. If they don't respond within the 75-day window, the water will be disconnected or shut off until the problem is dealt with. Again, the website's your best location for information, and you're also welcome to call the Cross Connection Control Program. And we've got phone number and email address on the final page. This notification, which may be a bit of a draft, may have some improvements, but will be distributed with the nine, 20, 24, next billing cycle this will go out with. So people will have a little more information than just the words they got the first time. This is a little more detailed. We have included in your documents a list of the current licensed certified cross-connection control technicians who are authorized to do testing in our area. At a look, it's 20-something odd, so there are quite a few. If you need to share that with anybody, it's also on the website. We were notified that the Spanish translation that we provided was not well-translated, and we did rely on technology because there was some urgency in getting, getting it out. We've since had an update done where a native Spanish speaker reviewed the document and improved it so that it's more comprehensible and more user-friendly for a Spanish speaker. And it was also posted with the QR code here in City Hall for approximately a week, and we will keep notifications available during the year as we process this. Are there any questions that I can answer?
If I can, Mayor and Council, there's a lot of information that was in that, and I think we needed to be a little more simpler, kind of letting it know. And I think, first off, there's not a public water emergency. So that's the number one thing that I think our, our residents and citizens need to know. This was an administrative error in regards to not reporting or forwarding reports of inspections annually of backflow preventers. So if anyone has a backflow preventer, they are required annually to have that inspected on our website. You can find the groups of areas of people who are certified to do that. If you have any questions, if you want to know if you have a backflow present, a backflow preventer, please contact our Utilities Department. We'd be happy to assist in letting you know if you do have one and if one needs to be inspected. So it really is just us not forwarding those inspections to the state. Obviously, the state has the wording they'd like to place into it, but this is not a public health emergency, you don't have to boil your water. And I think we've learned some important steps when moving forward and with these things come out.
I think the biggest question for me is that now we have a process in place to document where those are and then make sure that they're going to be reported from now on.
100%.
Done. Great.
Okay, so basically, it's a state requirement that if you have a backflow preventer, you have to have it inspected annually?
Yes, that's correct.
Your cost?
Yes.
Both residential and commercial?
That's correct.
Yikes, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question, if I can. Yeah, is it cool?
Hang on one second, Councilor Bosmans, I will, hang on one second.
Yes, absolutely, good point. The city's backflow preventers related to our facilities are inspected and reported annually, and they're in good, good status, good standing. There, there are no violations with the city.
Excellent. Okay, Councilor Bosmans, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a couple. I appreciate it, and the update as well, Allison. First, I think it's a bit of a pity that that leaflet that came out with the utility bills had some language that was easily misinterpreted, especially when you speak about impacts to young children, the elderly, and that kind of stuff. It's, if, from what I hear from you, there is no risk unless there is cross-contamination. But first of all, I, I think, in summary, when I understand what you're saying is that every, pretty much every residence, a single-family house by law needs to have a backflow preventer, whether it's for inside the house or for irrigation. And most of the people, when they purchase a house, they will have an inspection that would identify the absence of that kind of backflow preventer. But the cost of annual testing is what, and the requirement for annual testing is what surprises me a little bit. Do you have any indication of what it costs for testing this?
I do, I do not. Do you know? About $150.
So that's a, that's an, I think, not so good news for most single-family homes in our town, on top of commercial, if they need it. Now, do all?
I should, if you don't mind my interjecting. There, there are non-testable backflow preventers in some meters, and those, obviously, since they're non-testable, do not get tested. However, if you have an irrigation system or any of the potential contaminants, otherwise, you will have a testable backflow preventer.
So how does the state, or the state in that manner, assure that a non-testable backflow preventer actually functions?
We do not.
Okay, that's interesting. Is there a requirement that you think that's going to happen? That any non-testable backflow preventer will be required to be either replaced with a test? I think all the, all the houses I've seen have a testable, based on your pictures, backflow preventer. So I think the majority of houses will still fall under that category. The cost of testing is what bothers me a little bit because we're imposing, not we, but the, every resident, every household that has a house will have to pay that fee annually on top of it. And I was wondering if all cities and towns in Colorado have the same requirement, which it seems to be. But more importantly, do any of those offer this testing to be done by the city as part of the city's services? And I ask that question because we have such a significant fund balance in the waterfront. So, and if we at least make a gesture for, from our side out, the cost would be, I mean, still be a decent cost, but we have so much money in that fund.
There are various locations that handle it differently, and some that handle it the same way we do with reporting only.
Just a clarification, though, Allison. It's not every residential customer has a backflow preventer, is that correct?
No.
Okay, so there are residential units that do not have one.
There are some that we're aware of. Most that do not have a backflow preventer have the dual flow on the meter that was intended to take care of the purpose, but they're non-testable. So those are not a part of this program.
And those are the newer meters, I think, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Are those the newer meters? I, I'm, I'm just going to say the way I see it, yeah. We have about, what, 9,000 households, single-family residences, with quite a big number of it. A large majority of those people will have a backflow preventer that needs to be tested or don't even have a backflow preventer, which is even more problematic. But that's another topic. If they have a black, if they install a back. So basically, we're asking a lot of people to spend that kind of money to test it. And I think as a city, maybe we should consider making that a little bit easier on our residents.
I would look for guidance on that, yes.
So would that be the best brought forward on a new business for the regular council meeting later today? Or is this something I could ask other councilors at this point?
No, you can't. We can't do anything in a study session. So no, there's no direction given during a study session. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you, Allison.
All right.
Next up, we have our Aviation Department Monthly Report with Tony.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Tony Bicari, Aviation Director at the Durango-Lapada County Airport. Looks like we're just getting the slides queued up here and we'll get going. Provide a quick monthly report, start off with activity metrics for the airport. Most of these are through May. You can see airline employments continue to be strong. We're up 13% year-to-date through May. That's on only a 2% increase in net seat capacity. So our load factors or percentage of seats filled on these aircraft continues to be high at nearly 80%. That's up 10% over 2023. So demand remains very strong in the market relative to airline traffic. You can see parking lot exit volume and rental car contract days, which are reflective of local and visitation demand respectively, are both also up. We're seeing a little bit higher volume on the rental car contract days than we are on the parking side. So just slightly upticked demand relative to the visitation piece as related to local traffic, but both are trending very positive. Terminal concession revenue continues to be up sharply, driven primarily by increased food and beverage revenue generation in the terminal. General aviation landed weight, this was a metric that was actually down through March and April. May was a very strong traffic month for general aviation or private aircraft traffic. So now we are back in the positive sharply on that year-over-year. And then the only trailing factor at this point is air freight volume, which is down a couple of percentage points year-to-date from 2023. Here you can see just a quick visualization of the airline traffic numbers through May. We've had double-digit increases each month so far through the first five months. We'll have our final June numbers here in the next week. I'm anticipating, based off of early data from TSA screening counts, that will be up again double digits over 2023, potentially deep double digits. We've had a few days in June where we've broken our individual all-time daily screen traffic number through the TSA screening checkpoint. Both of the last two Saturdays have broke that record on the all-time basis. So we're continuing to see really strong demand as we move through peak time, which is summer and early fall at DRO. Quick run-through on the airline route network. We're in peak season here in July. United, which runs a very consistent flight schedule year-round, continues to offer five daily flights to Denver International. American, which is a little more volatile in terms of how they align their capacity with our seasonality, is pushing heavy traffic right now to align with our busy season, running four to five daily flights to Dallas-Fort Worth and three daily to Phoenix. On Saturdays, American is flying one Airbus A319 of the larger mainline aircraft to provide additional seat capacity into the market. Houston continues to be offered by United throughout the summer. We'll have better snapshot of how that flight is performing once we get June numbers, which was the first full month of performance this summer. So by the time we do this update next month, we'll have a little bit better insight into how the Houston route is performing so far in 2024. And then lastly, United Airlines recently notified us that they'll actually be increasing their daily frequencies from five to six daily at the end of September. United's been flying five daily frequencies between DRO and Denver for about two and a half years at this point. And so the increase up to six is a, is a marked improvement for us, provides additional scheduling options. The specific flight will be a second Remain Overnight, or RON, aircraft, as we refer to them. So it'll be one of the latest flights that comes in in the 10:00 PM hour, stays overnight, and it'll be a very early departure. It's scheduled out at 5:30 in the morning. The, in the pre-COVID days, we, we'd have a regular 5:30 AM departure on United that went away as they consolidated some of their flight schedule post-COVID, in particular as they backed off some of the very early departures, which tended to be more business-friendly as business traffic dwindled during and immediately after the pandemic. As we're continuing to see growth and restoration on the business traffic side, that early departure is becoming more advantageous. So that'll be back in the market effective the last week of September. So adding more flight options for the traveling public. Rundown of projects, a lot going on in terms of capital projects at the airport here. I won't go through each of these, but just highlight a few. First off, on the terminal side, various members of council are present for the formal ribbon-cutting of Phase 1A. That project is not fully complete just yet, as we've noted in previous meetings. The next chunk of that particular project is the completion of two family restrooms and a nursing mother's room. We just did our punch list walk yesterday for those spaces and anticipating those will open next week to the public. So excited for that. So we'll formally take down the construction walls in the terminal and open up all those spaces, which will be great amenities for the traveling public. We've never offered formal family restrooms or nursing mother's rooms in the history of the airport. So having those opportunities post-screening is going to really provide a much better environment for all types of travelers in and out of, of the airport. So that's really exciting. So that'll be happening next week. And then after that, the only remaining trailing item on Phase 1A is the installation of a new emergency backup generator. That's over a year procurement. We're expecting that to arrive hopefully in August and be able to get that installed and formally close out Phase 1A, which will lead us right into Phase 1B. As we've talked about with prior meetings here, really no major update. We're waiting for a Federal Aviation Administration discretionary grant, which is the last key piece of funding that'll be coming forward for Phase 1B that is tentatively anticipated in the August timeframe, hopefully allowing us to break ground late August or possibly into September and get moving on Phase 1B, which will be moving forward for about 27 months, a little over two years of total construction as we work through that very big project to complete the entirety of Phase 1 of the terminal expansion. So looking forward to that. One thing I would prep and note for the council, in upcoming meetings, you will see a formal item on your agenda to approve a state infrastructure bank loan agreement for the airport. We'd primed the council numerous times on this in the past, but the airport is intending to take out an $8 million loan through CDOT's SIB State Infrastructure Bank Loan Program. It's a low-interest revolving loan program that was recently approved in June by CDOT and their Civil Aeronautics Board, and we'll just be looking to- And we'll just be looking to push that through a formal council process to uh formally encumber that debt for the airport uh as we move into this project. A couple of the notes here, our parking lot expansion project is moving along very nicely. That broke, uh, started construction on May fifteenth, and we're still targeting a July fifteenth completion, which is only a couple of weeks from now. Uh, we're uh lined up to be able to start paving early next week, right after the holiday, and hopefully have that completed by the fifteenth and get that lot back open. It's been very uh busy at the airport. Uh, parking lots have been at and near capacity, uh, times overcapacity. Uh, but we've been able to manage that throughout the process. We have additional temporary staffing we've brought on to help us through the project, uh, project, assist passengers and park people uh no matter what. And it's, it's actually gone a little better than we expected. So that's been great. So but we're looking forward to open that. It'll offer nearly three hundred new paved spaces at the airport and really open up a lot of additional capacity as we roll through the busiest parking time of the year, which for us is late summer through fall. Um, aside from that, um, projects continue to move very smoothly and we're excited. The only other one I'd notice, we just completed construction on our commercial apron concrete joint seal project, which is just uh smart preventative maintenance on concrete where aircraft park at the airport. And lastly, just a couple of photos. You can see, we talked about Phase One A. This is some of the new space that'll be opened here next week. Uh, we have expanded terrazzo flooring on what will become the future concourse moving down the terminal. So we're continuing to expand that in pieces. And then just a bit of a snapshot on the left there of the uh, one of the new family restrooms, which is now complete with fixtures and and fitted out and be ready to go next week. And then lastly, a few photos of the, the parking project we just talked about. The ADA spaces are actually now complete and open. Um, so that's been a great addition and the main parking lot anticipated to be open in several weeks. Uh, with that, I'll just take any questions.
Any questions for Tony? Very exciting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay, next up, we have Engage and Inform Community, Community Engagement Management Monthly Report with Clancy.
You got it. Uh, hi, everybody. Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Clancy Nixon. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist. Wanted to give you our monthly update for our new Engage and Inform Community goal area. So Tom is also here from our Public Information Office to uh present on that informed piece of this goal area. Uh, we hosted five meetings in May and June as far as our community meetings go. We had about a hundred and forty attendees with these five meetings. I wanted to highlight a couple of things out of these meetings. We have um the Animus Drew, Animus View Drive meeting. You saw a photo um from Chief up there with um some of our Latina uh community members. I wanted to just really excitedly report out that all of our services were utilized during that meeting. So our interpretation services, our childcare services, um, it felt really, really good to be prepared for that. They showed up. We had translated slides for them um to read uh during the presentation. And then we had an interpreter right there ready and childcare available. So I asked them at the end of the meeting if they felt supported and comfortable at the meeting, and they all said yes. So it was a huge win, I felt like, for our efforts up to this point. Um, we also, I wanted to highlight the neighborhood parking plan. That was a big meeting as well as Sarah already touched on, but we had sixty-two attendees there. Um, that was the biggest out of those five meetings. And I'm happy to report that a hundred percent of our survey respondents, so we survey at the end of each of these meetings, asking everybody who showed up how we did. And we still are at a hundred percent for folks saying they'll attend another city meeting. So another good piece of that. Our Engage Durango website is rolling. So we have um some momentum primarily due to, you can see that giant spike there um on your screen. That is uh Downtown's Next Step Survey. So that's, that's that one. That's when we launched that. So we had over seven hundred respondents for that survey, as Sarah already mentioned. Um, another highlighted project for the Engage Durango website for May was the capital improvement projects that we launched. And we asked folks to um play around with that and get some feedback from them as far as the prioritization out of each of those funds. So um added that on there as well. Though current registrations we have on the site, um, there were ninety-six new in May for folks who actually are signing up to use the site and not be anonymous. Um, we have sixteen projects on there. Um, and those highlighted projects I already mentioned, and I just wanted to remind everybody that the website is engaged.durangoco.gov. We did a recent straw poll at that neighborhood parking program, um, that neighborhood parking plan meeting. I was curious how many folks who were at that meeting had actually been to the Engage Durango website. Not very many of them raised their hand, which I actually was happy about. We had great engagement online for um that specific project. We had forty-one comments, just folks submitting their comments just on that page alone. Um, so I knew folks were engaging on there and we had a kind of a packed house for that meeting. So our efforts to not only engage with people online, but engage with people in person, we're getting two very different audiences. So I just wanted to share that result as well. Um, some upcoming engagement opportunities that we have, we have the Midtown Safety and Connectivity Sixty Percent Design Meeting on July tenth. The Engage Durango Forum that um we have slated for July twenty-third, Marty Cool, our Sustainability Manager, is gonna be presenting for that one. Um, so that's the focus for our informational meeting at the beginning. And then we, as Sarah mentioned as well, Downtown's Next Step Focus Group is in development. So we'll have some more detail soon and we'll get that up on the Engage Durango website once we have that application live. Last time I presented in May, um, I had mentioned that I was going to come with a recommendation for the, for revamping the Community Relations Commission. I felt like it was prudent. I don't have a full recommendation for you. We are waiting on a feedback, a community feedback report. It's gonna be eight, actually nine hundred pages now, where we've heard from eight hundred sixty-nine community members in those stakeholder um uh focus groups, as well as a survey that went out to our community members. I felt like it was necessary to wait till we read through that report before we actually like really dive in and, and I make a full-on suggestion on what I feel like the Community Relations Commission should be charged with. But I did um draft up a purpose, um, as well as the number of members that I felt like would, would be a good starting point. So that drafted purpose is the Community Relations Commission assists with ensuring our diverse community members feel safe and supported when they interact with the City of Durango as an organization. The CRC will help, will help create a welcoming environment for historically disadvantaged groups that encourages participation and builds trust and understanding. The CRC works to build new relationships and community leaders in organizations, celebrate Durango's diverse cultural communities, and cultivate meaningful and authentic engagement. So really, I wanted to put the focus on the relationship building within the community with organizations, community leaders, um, to help uplift those historically disadvantaged groups and incre- and increase their participation in the local government. So uh, the reason I felt that I felt like I should recommend increasing the commission members from five to up to nine is I felt like nine allows for a better representation of this historical, those historically disadvantaged groups within our community. So with that, any questions before I turn it over to Tom?
Any questions for Clancy? Okay, excellent.
Afternoon, counselors. So for those of you who don't know, um, the PIO, Public Information Office, has four main components to it. So we've got our video component, we've got our social media component, we've got our website, and then we have our media relations. Uh, and that pretty much matches with the four people that we currently have there right now. So we're gonna start with the uh, the website. Um, this is historically kind of our big dog in terms of getting our messaging out there. And uh, right now, uh, year to date, we've got one point three million page views. And that's a sixty-two percent increase over last year. Uh, last year, we had two point one million page views in total, so we are on track for another record year. Um, in addition to that, we have three hundred and sixty-one thousand users um year to date uh who are also increasingly using the website in a more active fashion, judging by the events. And we use events as a, like a click on a link or filling out a form, playing a video. So we're continuing to see growth and not only law growth, but also just they're more engaged as well. So the most popular uh webpages right now, of course, are jobs um at a hundred and eighty-four thousand uh web pa- web page views. But if you dig into it a little bit further, um, and you look at the number of webpages related to the airport, um, the airport really is our number two um driver in terms of content. I take our jobs. It's really number one, just as an aside. So thank you, Tony. Uh, for news and announcements, uh, basically, these are our news releases. Um, for June, we had twenty-three news releases that had seven thousand views, and that's a hundred and thirty-four increase, percent increase over last year. Year to date, we've done a hundred and fifteen news releases that have been viewed forty-two thousand times. That's a twenty percent bump over last year. And of course, the topics range on everything from uh pickleball courts opening to North Main ADA upgrades and pretty much everything in between. Uh, the most popular news releases so far are the spring cleanup, Lake Night Horse opening, repaving of the parking lot at the airport, uh, another airport one for United service uh to Houston. And um, number five, last but not least, was uh Kelly's hiring for new Parks and Act Director. Um, our number one uh engagement tool on the website is our See Click Fix uh portal. So you can go on there and uh make a request for anything that's happening. It's typically an operational perspective. But if you do have a general question, it's the other category. Uh, at this point, we've got um four hundred and ninety-seven uh requests year to date. And of course, the number one uh request is for unsanctioned camping. And otherwise, it just kind of trickles off to, you know, abandoned vehicles, snow removal, sidewalk damage, et cetera, all the way down. And we're looking for ways to increasingly uh make that available to the public. Moving on to our video efforts, um, this has really been one of the key drivers, I think, for our office, um, because this has such a wide-ranging, excuse me, impact. So year to date, sorry, month, we've had uh twenty-six videos that we've produced in June, been viewed a hundred and fifty-nine thousand times. That's a six-fold increase over last year. Year, and then uh year to date, we've done a hundred and five videos produced, been viewed almost a half a million times. And that's a four hundred and forty percent increase over last year. And similar to news releases, it's everything under the sun from, you know, roller disco at Chapman to uh ski hill improvements and everything in between. Uh, the highlights year to date, of course, the Cybertruck. I have no idea why this took off. Um, apparently, the components were there, cops and EV cars, who knows? But across platforms, we're at a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand plus views right now. Paint striping on Eleventh Street, and, and that was one that also took off, uh, seventy thousand plus views. And then Lego Club finally came in. It's number three with seventeen thousand views. And then the Tosh Black Series, uh, we've kind of created a little, uh, a little celebrity with Tosh, got really good feedback on that. People love him. He's great in front of camera. Uh, sixteen thousand views. And then the uh Lightning Hits City Bus um um meme was eleven thousand views. And I'll get into the methodology. There is a method to that madness. I'll explain in a second. So uh, social media because of these video efforts largely has just continued to post uh numbers across the board. You know, we've had two thousand posts um year to date, which is a thirty percent bump over last year. Impressions, you know, it says five million. It's accurate, but you have to take that with a grain of salt because, you know, that's just being broadcast to the universe. It's still a very high number, obviously. Uh, and it's up over last year. We have seventy thousand um audience followers across all of our channels. Thousands of messages sent and received. Um, and just one quick uh highlight is, uh, again, we've got seventy thousand followers. Uh, the police Facebook is our number one account. Um, the cities uh combined is a little bit higher, but the Instagram account in particular, uh, we typically see social media accounts growing two to four percent a year. Uh, Instagram was eleven percent one month, and so that's five hundred and eighty-four uh new followers in the past thirty days. So we expect that to continue to grow and it'll probably become our top, top three pretty soon. Again, that's largely because of our, our video efforts. Getting back to the Cybertruck, so there is a method to the madness. Um, the whole goal is, you know, we want to put out basically a fun video, like the striping um one, and then immediately follow it up with the serious content. And so you'll see this repeat itself on the um social media channels. You'll see a fun video, but then you'll see County Road Two Fifty, Two Fifty-One. Um, you'll see uh Public Works fixing a water tank, you know, that kind of stuff. So we did it for this one. Uh, same thing with uh Cybertruck, which was, we put it out there and then we followed it up with the open, uh, open house for Animus Drive. Um, cleanup downtown progress on Best Western Housing. And so, of course, the whole goal is, once you've got their attention, let's give them the real stuff. And so taken together, what I've put together is on the left-hand side, this is three years ago, our social media on Instagram. And so you can see, it's just a lot of black space. It's very static. You might get a couple hundred views if you're lucky. Um, there was an indicator three years ago. If you look at the fish, there's almost a thousand views, and you could tell that's what public wanted. So we took the information on the right-hand side is what we currently have for Instagram. Again, typically, you'll get thousands of views. It's a much more, I think, dynamic approach. Um, and it's been responded to very well by the public. Um, and that's it.
I'm just smiling because I think it's so great. I really enjoy the social media posts. It's wonderful to see, but also the news and announcements are so, they're very informative. Um, and I really appreciate those as well. But yeah, I smile just because I, I mean, I enjoy them. They're fun, very creative.
Yes, they are fun and exciting. I'm curious, so how did you make this evolution? Was this something you went to training or you just visualized this?
Um, Jose gives us all enough rope to run free. So I wanna thank him um for, for, uh, no, it was just, it's really the, the climate. I'm not trying to blow smoke, but he really has created that uh atmosphere among staff where if you're willing to take the risk um without putting your job at risk, you know, um, it, it can pan out. And, and I think, you know, also it carries over. Personally, you know, when I used to write um action lines for the, for the Herald, the whole goal was you can get a lot of engagement and a lot of buy-in when everybody's kind of in on the joke. And so it, it humanizes the bureaucracy. I think it makes it more approachable. And I think there's also a very desperate need for uh the public in general to kind of have uh some sort of way to be heard. And, and it's amazing that even on some of these kind of off-handed uh social media posts, they're very appreciative, like, thank you for responding. Thank you for, you know, letting us know the stop signs up at uh um Flori Road. It's, it's a combination of things.
Well, great. Thank you. I appreciate your insight. Thank you.
My son sent me the Cybertruck one on Instagram. He thought it was hilarious. So, um, no, I appreciate you getting, and it also, I think, helps get younger people involved and, and informed. Um, I have a bunch of staff that are, you know, in their twenties and early thirties, and they're always like, where do, how do I stay informed? And this is actually how they stay informed now, um, because I don't listen to city council meetings. I know, it's so weird. Um, but anyways, so thank you for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, Council. Just to kind of tag on, appreciate Tom's comments and just the staff. When you look at community engagement, this is a part to it. Uh, when you see kind of what is it the public wants, and I know when we stopped moving away from council connections, there was some blowback for that. But when you look at sixty views, eighty-seven views, sixty-seven views, that's not what the public was wanting to see, right? And I think that Tom did a really good job of saying it, of making, humanizing, but making the cities work fun and entertaining, and that brings people in, and then it also moves through. So anytime we look at community engagement, there's different parts. Clancy, I think, also showed a wonderful part about our connected, engaged website. And you saw the, the impressions and the views that are getting there. We are reaching a, a wider audience, uh, and a more diverse audience uh and letting them know about City of Durango, and it's a testament to the staff uh that we have here and working. Uh, that's Tom's group, Clancy's group, our, our ELT, and our staff members also just being able to want to be part of it and taking risks as well uh with uh the, the videos and then also having the ability to laugh at ourselves.
Excellent. What else?
I think at the end of the year, you need to show us the, the, the top video.
I was gonna bring some in today.
Yeah, because some of them are just so great. Well, I wanna see the winner.
I love that even on this year's fireworks post, people were referring back to last year's Bayfield, where we called out Bayfield with the truck, and people are still talking about it. It's great. So it's just kind of continuing on. So thank you.
Yeah, Bayfield plays along.
They do. I saw. All right, perfect. All right, next item is adjournment. We'll see you at five thirty. Thank you.